Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, October 4th, 2011. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is a joint resolution of the Board of Commissioners and the Water and Sewer Authority providing for the issuance of Water and Sewage Revenue Funding Bonds Series 2011. Our presenter is Attorney Buddy Welch and Attorney Andy Welch, Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, and that will be handout number one.
Madam Chairman, as usual, we brought our brains with us, Gordon Morton. Gordon, will you give the people an update on what we're doing, please?
In 2002, there was a series of bonds issued, part of which provided new construction money and part of which was a refunding of a prior issue, 1992 and 93 bonds. The market has now come to a point where we can refund those, a portion of those 2002 A bonds and generate savings for the Water Authority by doing that. What we're asking you all to do is to approve a joint resolution, the Water Authority approved it yesterday, that provides us a range of possibilities on this refunding so that we can validate a bond issue that will essentially build a box into which we would like to fit this refunding. This is very much what we did in 2009 when we came to you and said, "Look, there's an opportunity to refund the 2007 bonds. The market isn't there yet. We would like to be positioned, when and if the market gets there, to take advantage of that." In this case, the market is there on part of that 2002 A bonds that can be refunded. There is savings to be available for doing it now. There are also some opportunities for other portions of that 2002 A issue as we go forward into 2012 to refund the rest of them and to take savings. To do that, we need to have a bond issue validated that would allow us the flexibility to do both of those portions of this at a time when it provides the most savings, and that's what they're asking you to do, and it's very similar to what you did in 2009.
The proposals that we have put before you, we have set a bottom line cap of 3.5% net return to the Authority, and the two mil tax is not being extended by the refinance. They have the same maturity dates as the existing bonds, so it's not being extended. And the Water Authority want to make sure that all of you knew that.
I think that was probably the most pressing question we all had, was on that issue, and I appreciate the clarification on that. Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have one.
Mr. Holder?
And of course, Mr. Welch has already addressed the issue about the extended maturity date, and it will not extend it. The second thing is, I know there's no way to know at this point, but what do you anticipate the savings to the Water Authority to be with the refinancing?
On the optimi- very optimistic side of this, we could be as much as $4 million net of expenses. When we divide it into two series, we're probably going to be something down in the million dollar range on the first series and another million or more on the second series. That we're fairly certain can be achieved, but optimistically, if everything worked out exactly perfect, nothing changed in the market from where it was 10 days ago, and it's already moved some off of that, the outside savings would have been $4 million over the remaining life of the bonds, net of all issuance expenses.
So basically, one to four million dollar savings could be a...
And the Authority is not going to undertake it with less than a million dollars of savings or three and a half percent present value savings, whichever is the greater restriction.
You know, normal market is 3% net savings. If you get 3% net savings, it's something you ought to do, but they set the goal at 3.5 like we did last time, and that's what we're going to shoot for again.
And in both the last twice that you've done this, we've actually well exceeded that, but you've got to have a minimum because everybody in this transaction is working contingent. So there's a minimum threshold which if we cross, will likely go forward, but that isn't necessarily the minimum savings. We've done better than that in each instance, and we hope to do so again, but don't think anything bigger than four million because that's the sun, the moon, the stars lining up, and nobody touching anything.
Mr. Alata?
I commend you for taking this action with the markets where they are, as you said. More people or more municipalities should be taking advantage as well. Just right now with government bonds at, what, .25, everybody's trying to find a place for safety in municipals. First question, I guess, is the bond rating presently of the Water Authority?
Double A, too.
So it basically puts it into that ranking where people are looking for municipal bonds, and these are the types that looking for is a safe haven. Curious, I forgot I asked before, is tax free, are these tax free or not?
They're exempt from state and federal income tax, but state income tax only if you live in the state of Georgia.
So again, additional plus for people looking for a safe haven with bonds. Like I'm selling your bonds here for you, but...
That's all right, I've got your check.
The other is, I don't think you said, but maybe I missed it, and that is that, again, this does not add any additional principal. You're just taking the existing principal that you would retire off the existing bonds and placement in the same number of years, as you said, for the same amount at a lesser rate.
That's correct. We could actually end up with a smaller principal amount if the bonds are sold at a premium because we apply the premium to that. You really want to think of this not so much in terms of the principal amount as annual debt service reduction. What you want to see is debt service reduction in every year. It could be that the principal's a little larger, depending on whether the bonds are sold at a premium or discount, and that's a function of what the market is on the day we do it. So this box that you're approving is big enough to accommodate all of those permutations and combinations, and our job is to bring it back to the Water Authority with the most advantageous combination to get the least amount of total debt service.
That's it. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question? If not, you have before you a joint resolution of Henry County and the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority as it pertains to the issuance of Water and Sewage Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2011, and I'll entertain a motion to approve it. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Alata and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is under juvenile court. We have a resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant award from the Council of Juvenile Court Judges. Our presenter is Judge William Bartels, juvenile judge, and that's exhibit number three. Good morning.
Madam Chairman, members, our juvenile court receives a grant on an annual basis and has for approximately 13 to 15 years in varying amounts of, over the years, to underwrite and assist with the cost of primarily what we use it for here is psychological evaluations on kids or before the court on either unruly or delinquent charges. This is, does not require a match from the county. The maximum we could apply for this year in this cycle was $7,500, which we applied for and have been approved for, subject to the county's acceptance of the grant. And we're here this morning, along with Judge Welch, asking that you accept that grant so that we can use those funds, and the fiscal year they run from is October 1st to September 30th, and we'll get right off the ground using those funds as soon as you let us do that.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have a resolution before you authorizing the acceptance of the grant, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Moving on to public safety, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for an online investigation system. Our presenter is Major Jason Bolton of the Police Department, exhibit number four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Simply put, the purpose of this project is to help locate stolen property and identify theft and burglary suspects. This grant will allow the Police Department to facilitate the implementation of an online reporting system that will help track stolen items that are pawned or sold at traditional pawn shops, as well as recycling centers and precious metals and gems dealers. The system will incorporate all of the municipalities within the county and allow law enforcement to connect to a nationwide database to search for stolen property by serial number descriptions and photographs, among other classifications, as well as for the suspects who pawn or sell these stolen items. It's the intent of this project to be implemented in phases with the first being voluntary compliance from resellers. The second phase would garner compliance through improved county ordinances. Currently in Henry County, only traditional pawn shops are reporting their transactions to law enforcement. State law, however, requires reporting from precious metal dealers as well. This is where updating the county ordinances will come into play. The third phase would allow for regulatory fees from resellers to fund the enforcement of the established reporting system. It's important to note that phases two and three are optional and are not required under the grant agreement. There's a high level of coordination with the Police Department and other local jurisdictions as the Police Departments of McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove have agreed to participate in the program. The 2011 JAG grant is in the amount of $30,940, and in year one will fund 100% of the online reporting system for the County Police Department and equal access participation for each municipal police department. Because McDonough Police already subscribes to such a system, the year one budget allocation will pay for a complete tier three system for Hampton, Locust Grove, and the Henry County Police Department, and an upgrade from tier two to tier three for McDonough Police. The year two budget allocation will pay 100% of the annual renewal fee for the county and about 44% of the cost for each of the three municipal annual fee renewals. The remainder of that fee will be paid through alternate funding, which could include the seized asset and forfeiture account or the general accounts of the three municipalities. I have with me this morning Lieutenant Terry Lunsford, who has done a lot of research into this online reporting system. He has also conducted the meetings between the county and the city police departments and got us all on the same page, and I have with me also Kimberly Monist, our research and development specialist, who actually wrote the grant, so hopefully between the three of us, we'll be able to answer any questions that you may have in reference to this project.
Have you had an opportunity to speak to other jurisdictions that are using this to find out what their success has been or their experience has been?
Yes, ma'am. I've actually had people in our agency come to me about Griffin uses this, and they had a, they went to Griffin with some investigation related to metal thefts, as I recall, and Griffin pulled data out of the system, and they were thrilled by it. They came to me, "This is awesome. Have you seen this?" So I've heard nothing but good things about it from the people who've used it.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution for the acceptance of the grant in the amount of $30,940, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant for the HEAT program, and that's exhibit number five.
Yes, ma'am. The Police Department has participated in the HEAT program for many years. HEAT, which stands for Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic, is a unit whose primary function is to enforce DUIs, speeding, and aggressive traffic laws. Officers in the unit and the unit itself have won numerous awards over the years for their outstanding performance. In 2010, our HEAT unit was awarded the HEAT DUI Task Force of the Year. MAD Georgia has recognized the Henry County Police Department's dedication to saving lives for years as well. The unit consists of one sergeant and three officers. The 2011-2012 grant is in the amount of $54,000. This will fund 40% of the salaries and fringe benefits for the sergeant and one officer. The county will be responsible for 60% of their salaries and benefits, as well as 100% of the two additional in-kind officers in the unit. The grant also pays for 40% of the cost of the unit's telecommunications and recalibration of the radars and lasers. The county is responsible for the 60% remainder of those costs. Henry County's local cash match for the grant is $81,100. Funds have been allocated in the current fiscal year budget to cover these costs.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
The HEAT unit, Jason, they, I mean, they're aggressive traffic, so they're speeding. They're on our roads anyway, right?
Yes, sir, they are.
I mean, it's not like we're, we're out here hiring new officers just to run a HEAT program. I think it's important to note that we've got them anyway. This, this just helps us with equipment and other things and part of the salary of people that we already have.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, just, just wanted to make sure that that was plain because I knew what it was, but just, just in listening, it sounds like, "Oh, we're going to put a sergeant and some more people on." Well, they're out there anyway, and this is really helping us with equipment and other items, and they're out there for aggressive driving and DUIs. I mean, but all of our guys are out there for aggressive driving, too, so I mean, this just helps the county and our people.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all.
I think with the, with the markings on the car and everything, people have come to recognize that throughout the state, and they understand that when they come through communities that have those types of officers, that they need to keep their, their driving under control and in check, so it certainly helps to keep our streets safer.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Does any other board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution accepting the grant in the amount of $54,000 for the HEAT program, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Moving on to transit, we have a resolution requesting approval to apply for the fiscal year 2012 Georgia Department of Transportation contract for the 5311 Rural Transportation Program. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning. We are requesting approval for the 2012 capital assistance contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is for three replacement buses. The buses are recycled every five years or 100,000 miles, and so these three buses will be cycled off, and they will provide three new buses to replace those. The total cost is $159,600, and there's a 10% local match, which is $15,960. We request approval, please.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving this, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, if I could. David, are these federal funds that are funnelled through the Georgia DOT?
Yes, sir.
Federal funds?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution requesting approval of a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation to resurface 9.376 miles on various county roads. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. Before you this morning, I asked for authorization for the Chairman to sign a contract with Georgia DOT that provides up to $956,910.76 of reimbursement for plant mix resurfacing of various county roads. This is the annual contract that we get from GDOT that was called LARP and now it's called LMIG. So this is where they will pay us as we put down this asphalt, they will reimburse us for that. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the Chairman to sign the contract with GDOT, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept Federal Transportation Enhancement Funding TE for the purpose of constructing trails at Nash Farm. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. The item before you this morning is a resolution to accept funds for a transportation enhancement funding program sponsored by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Back in 2009, county staff had a master, conceptual master plan done of the Nash Farm area, which we have on the screen right here, which depicts roughly 9,900 linear feet of a trail network expanding throughout the Nash Farm Park area. Back in December of 2010, staff submitted an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation to receive transportation enhancement funding, and in May of 2011, the county was notified by GDOT that we had, in fact, our, this project had been selected as a potential project to receive funding. To date, there's been no financial commitment from the, from the county. However, at this time, staff is asking for, seeking approval from the board to accept this financial, the financial funds from the GDOT TE program in the amount of $435,600. This includes a 20% match, a local match from Henry County, which would equate to an amount of $108,900 for the project construction. And again, we're asking for, seeking board approval for authorization to accept the funding and agree to the 20% funding, which at this time, we're looking at meeting with in-kind services in the form of engineering, surveying, site grading, which is an allowable, which is an allowable allowance from GDOT for this program. All of our 20% match can be met with in-kind services. So again, we're asking for authorization from the board to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to accept these funds and sign unnecessary documents. Happy to address any questions you may have.
I have one quick question. In the executive summary, it's showing 108,900, but in the resolution, 108,400. So there's a difference of $500.
Okay.
So we need to get the correct...
I get that clarified. Yeah, it should be 20% of the construction amount, which would have been $544,500, so 20% of that, and it should equate to 108,900.
900. We need to correct the resolution then.
And just as a point of clarification, it shows on the application as well as a $5,000 difference between the construction amount and the actual cost estimated amount. That was a $5,000 add that was included for the design. Initially, there was some conversation about looking at subbing the design out. After further conversation, I thought would be, if this board is deciding to move forward and accept these funds, that we would handle the design work in-house, and the value of that engineering, whether it's 5,000 or 2,000, whatever it may be, can be a part of that 20% local match of 108,900.
What other project do we currently have TE funds on?
We have a project that was awarded back in 2008, late 2008, 2009, which involves doing sidewalks here along Henry Parkway, back along in front of Mercer, extending, extending back over toward the, what used to be the soccer complex, which is now the Red Hawk Baseball Complex. And that's in the works right now, being done. Same, same setup is being done in kind, using in-kind services with Terry and his group at Henry County DOT. They're doing the engineering and layout, and they'll be doing the site grading as well, and likely hire a contractor to come in and do the concrete work.
But on this, for Nash Farm, we're talking about trails, we're not talking about sidewalks.
That is correct. It's a trail network, again, as depicted on the concept plan. Maybe a little bit difficult, let me just kind of point out these areas here, kind of meanders through the park project itself. That's the proposed layout for the trail network at the park.
And all 20% of that funding can be matched with employees that are currently in the county with their skill set?
That is correct.
So no money being paid to anyone outside the county to do that.
That is correct. Even the engineering, we went back and confirmed that with the, with GDOT, with the program manager for this program, just to confirm that the engineering portion can be done in-house so long as it's stamped by a professional engineer license in Georgia, and we have four on staff.
Okay. Does any board member have questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, so 100% of the 20% is in-kind services?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, what dollar amount is the engineering cost?
We don't know. We are required to assign a value to the engineering and as much as we'll assign a value to the grading work, and again, initially, we looked at about $5,000. It'll be a matter of how much time is spent on doing the engineering work, so I anticipate it may be less than that initially estimated $5,000.
Now, these are, and I don't know that you would know the answer to this, but are these trails currently used for cross-country for, for some of our schools?
I know, yeah, and I don't know. I know they had, just recently ran a cross-country meet out at Nash Farms. I don't believe these trails currently exist, I don't think all these trails exist out there at this time, and this would be a 12-foot wide paved trail to be used for, again, multi, multi-use for walking, running.
Paved with concrete or asphalt?
Likely asphalt.
The, currently, are the trails in place currently, or are we going to have, are they all new?
There aren't, there are trails in place out there.
There's, there are several sets of trails when you face the, I guess that would be the south. There's a trail network that goes off to the right that the cross-country folks use because they go out and mow a path through the fields out there and then use that part. But there are also trails to the left that are currently gravel that these funds will be used to resurface.
So the, so we're basically, I'm trying to make a point, basically, we're, we're doing upkeep on trails that exist that we would not have to do near as much on, such as keeping them clean and keeping them graded and keeping gravel or whatever we have to do on those.
Right.
Once they're paved, then basically, it's more or less a cleanup type thing as opposed to continual grading and surface and repair and the other things that we would have to do on gravel trails.
That's right.
That's why I was curious if we had, because I have not been there, so I didn't know if, 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 if all of these are new or part of them are new or some of it's new, and of course, I mean, the engineering part, you know, I mean, really, you know, for that type of thing, seems like it would be more, obviously, you're going to have to keep the hours, and that's the only way that you can calculate that. You can't really calculate it like if you sent it out to an engineering firm to do it, it would be more than $5,000.
Yeah, and GDOT, and that's how they specify, they want to make sure we assign a legitimate value to the engineering work. Wade Stroud and Terry's office is doing work on the, is doing engineering for the other TE project now, and in the same manner, he maintains his hours and how much time is spent doing engineering.
Okay. I'd gotten a call or two, and there was one issue that, we have a few buildings out there on property, and we have gravel parking lots. Is that correct? Because I, honestly, I have not, I've been there one time.
Yeah.
So when I was asked about it, there was a couple of situations with wheelchairs where they couldn't get to certain buildings, and I'm, I'm curious as to if we require the private sector to have a paved area to get a wheelchair to. Is that currently there? And I know this is kind of off the subject, Madam Chair, but it is something that we might need to address if we've got an area where we've got public coming in and yet it's not accessible to handicapped, and I don't know that that's the case. I'm just saying, I was, had a few phone calls, and that was what I was told.
We can certainly look into that to make, to ensure that the trail system would be accessible for, and meet ADA requirements, so wheelchair accessibility would be...
So that they don't park on gravel and have to go through gravel to get to the paved trail?
Right. I would imagine that could be included as part of the scope of this project, certainly.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
About three weeks ago, there was a, two major universities, University of Georgia as well as LSU, had a cross-country meet out there, so Nash Farms is getting a reputation as a, as a great spot to have cross-country meets. That was a Division One college school out there.
That's right.
Now, there's no one here from Parks and Rec to verify that, but I'm sure there's numerous cross-country meets with our county school systems out there, too.
Mr. Holder?
Yes, sir.
Bruce, hold on, Bruce, hold on just a second. You gonna let him go for okay?
Mike, we currently have two of these, these grant, these grants in queue.
Yes, sir, we do. In fact, I want to make a correction on the executive summary. I called out Ms. Dana Lemon as a, as this being in 13th congressional district. This is actually, was the selection of Mr. Sam Wellborn, our third district, he represents the 3rd congressional district on the state transportation board, and he was responsible for selecting this project. But we do have another one located in the 13th congressional district. Panola Mall, we're waiting on the MOU to come back in from GDOT as we speak right now, so as soon as that comes back in, we're going to be coming back before the board. Again, no, no funds have been committed at this time, but we have been notified that we were recipients of roughly $700,000 to do a, a trail project up in the 13th congressional district as well.
I understand that the 20% match for Nash Farms will be all in kind?
That's correct.
But there's going to be a financial match for Panola? How is that determined?
You know, again, certainly with the, the complexity of the project and scope of the project are vastly different. Certainly one, at Nash Farms, it's a open field, and just looking at it, the ability to do in-kind services at Nash Farms... to do in-kind services at Nash Farm, it played more to, you know, what we could do. There's a bit more with the Panola Mountain, proposed project at Panola Mountain, a bit more complex in that we have to acquire right-of-way, not quite sure exactly what the layout's going to be, not sure what challenges we're gonna have to, to deal with as we, as we lay out and design the project. So at the time, the application was done, the thought was that, you know, worked in conjunction with the PATH Foundation, I think that's a key point to note as well, they've been renowned for doing a number of trail projects throughout the Atlanta metropolitan area. And so when we did the application, it was done in kind of conjunction with the PATH Foundation, and they're actually, they, the agreement was they're putting up, I think, more than double the amount that the county would be putting up in this case. So, I mean, the thought was, the exact reason as to how that was determined for it to be using general fund as opposed to in-kind, I think it thought that it was, the scope of the project was much larger, and it thought that was, you know, we need to have some kind of consulting work, and had to put some money back toward that project as opposed to doing it all in-kind. And plus, working in conjunction with the, with the PATH Foundation, I think that was a discussion that, that's where, that were had.
Who determines if the match is in-kind versus financial?
I think at the time, you know, that was a management decision.
Is it the county, or is it the state? Is it federal? Who determines if our match is?
We can make that determination, yes, certainly. You know, with the Nash Farm project, we could have opted, certainly, to look at subbing out our work and paying a consultant for the work, but rather than spending additional funds on this that we knew we can do in-house and handle, have the staff to do in-house, we thought it'd be prudent and appropriate to do, utilize in-kind services on that project in the same manner that we're doing them for the, for the project that we're working on right now. Again, in that, in those, both of those cases, we're not having to acquire any additional right-of-way or acquire any additional property. I think all the work is being done for the one we're doing now on, within our right-of-way. The one at Nash Farm, obviously, is all on our property. So we kind of knew exactly what we were getting into. You know, with the other one, we still haven't determined an alignment yet, so there's still a lot of things that still need to be determined.
Is the PATH Foundation involved with Nash Farms?
No, sir, they have not been.
Can you explain how the PATH Foundation is working with Henry County?
They appro, I'm not sure if they approached us, we approached them, or exactly how the initial contact was made, but they have been.
But how are they gonna work with us to, to get these paths, or to accomplish the project, or get the projects complete?
Right. They will, we're entering an agreement with them, again, when, once we receive the MOU from, the memorandum of understanding from the Georgia Department of Transportation, we've also have been conversing back and forth with the PATH Foundation, and we'll have a separate agreement between Henry County and the PATH Foundation to determine exactly their scope of work and our scope of work. Principally, we'll be hiring them as a, as a manager consultant, and they'll go out, find the subcontractors, secure the supplies, and they'll, in essence, be working as our, as our manager for the project.
Looking forward from PATH in terms of contribution. Latanya, maybe you can help us out with that?
I'm not really sure. I think perhaps the county manager can eliminate those issues.
Their cash contribution is $178,000 towards the project, as well as the construction and project management.
So we'll be looking at less than 20% in terms of our match?
Yes.
So we'll be looking, we're somewhere around 5%, Butch? In terms of match?
Our match would be approximately $50,000.
Okay. But percentage-wise, is that, is that around 5%?
That's about right, because the total project is, I think, roughly estimated $928,000. So 20% would be roughly about $135,000, $140,000. And the commitment from the county at this point would be $50,000. So, yeah, it'd be far less than the, than the 135, 20%, so whatever, 5, 7, 8% ballpark. That's correct.
Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
For those who may be confused about the conversation, we were just talking about two separate issues. We were talking about a TE funding for Nash Farm Park.
Yes.
And TE funding for the trails to Panola Mountain State Park, two separate issues.
That's correct.
And once you get the final information from GDOT, which you have not received because they're going by congressional district, this being the 3rd, that being the 13th, then you will be able to sit down with the PATH Foundation and with Commissioner Holmes and have the discussion on the dynamics involved in that particular funding for that particular project.
That's correct.
I know Mr. Holmes is coming into this somewhat new because Commissioner Basler initiated this prior to leaving office and had a number of meetings with the PATH Foundation leading up to the actual filing of the request with the Georgia Department of Transportation, but you will be able to update everyone once that final information gets sent.
That is correct. And we anticipate, in speaking with the GDOT representatives, we anticipate within the next week, as we receive that MOU, and as soon as we do, we'll make provisions to come back before this board and move forward with that as well, and see the board's approval to accept those funds.
Okay. And I believe, Mr. Holder, you had a comment pertaining to the Nash Farm trails?
Yeah, I do, and some questions. Michael, first question, city of Hampton, city of Locust Grove, city of McDonough, and I'm not sure about the city of Stockbridge, but all of those streetscape projects in those cities were done with T grants, were they not?
A great number of them was. In fact, and this one, city of Stockbridge, was also notified that they've also received a notification that one of their projects in city of Stockbridge was also selected.
Okay. We have received considerable criticism about taking this money. And I want you to pay attention to, to the items that we've just passed on the agenda today. Five items have been grants. This is an opportunity to get some of the funding that we all have concerns about, our tax dollars leaving the taxpayer's pocket in Henry County and going to the state and then to Washington and never coming home. And to clarify how federal projects work, we don't, every time, never really determine where those funds are to be used. There will be funds such as this for traffic enhancement, which is what T is, to get people out of cars, onto trails, onto sidewalks, whatever the case might be. We saw in previous grants in this meeting today, anything from transportation for seniors. We had transportation for resurfacing roads, and that may not be federal, but it's at least state, again, two different agencies, to where some of those funds are coming back to the taxpayer that paid the tax. I know we've received a lot of criticism, and I just cannot imagine why people would rather see their tax dollars that have been paid out of their pockets go to somewhere in Miami, or Los Angeles, New York, or wherever the case might be, rather than to have a project that will certainly improve what we currently have here within our county. Now, everybody has a right to criticize and do whatever, but this is, this is a project that I certainly will defend, and if the majority of the people don't like it, then they can certainly send me home. That's just the way it works. But this is, this to me is just an opportunity to get our tax dollars back to where they were originated. And unfortunately, we all see from day to day on many projects, that's one of the greatest concerns, those tax dollars go away and never return. This is an opportunity to get some of them back. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Mr. Bowman?
I'm gonna piggyback, piggyback on exactly what Mr. Holder was speaking of, because the information that you given, that you gave us in our book, it refers to a number of projects that money and funding has gone to, and I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read them all, but I'm gonna touch on a few. Fort Benning Road corridor enhancement, a half a million dollars. Chattahoochee River ecosystem restoration and Whitewater Project, $1 million. A million dollars for a master plan for city of Columbus. So there's Columbus getting $2.5 million. So exactly what Commissioner Holder is speaking of, if we don't take it, there are, there's a list, both sides, they'll take it, they'll take it in a heartbeat. So I, I agree with what Commissioner Holder just said, there's just, I'm talking about just local, I know Mr. Holder mentioned some other states, but there's counties that'll take the money and not even blink. So, I mean, we, this is gonna be an enhancement, and I agree. I just, I just want to say I agree with Mr. Holder, and wanted to bring out a couple of those dollar amounts that's going to other places, so.
And that's just in the 3rd congressional district.
Right.
There are 13 more out there.
Just, again, I guess, piggybacking on your comment, and let's bring it a little closer to home, and you see a list of cities and counties' neighbors, city of Barnes, Peachtree City, city of Morton, city of Fayetteville. Call those people and tell them that they don't need to accept those funds and to send them back and see how far you get.
That's right.
Mr. Alata?
I'd echo the same thing, as already been spoken, but to the point, as was said, and I've had numerous emails sent to me since Nash Farms may be in my district or whatever, but again, it comes down to, do we want the federal government spending money on this stuff? Are there other priorities? The answer is probably yes, but at the same time, if this money is going to be allocated and given to cities and counties and whatever, however the federal government's gotten it and is giving it out, it's money we're not going to get, and if we sit back and be a martyr and say, "We just won't do it," the message has got to go to Congress and say, "Stop having a program like this if that's what everybody feels." But if the money's gonna be sent from our tax dollars, which I believe the citizens in Henry County do pay federal tax dollars or state tax dollars, it'd be nice to get them here instead of giving them to Chicago, Miami, or, as was previously stated, the various cities and counties surrounding us, just in the 3rd district. I totaled this up, and it's somewhere over $7 million that's being handed out in that, those pages. So we're just $435,000 of it. Criticism of taxing our children in the future for these debts is going to be there, but again, whoever's going to get it, it's nice to see some of our tax dollars coming back to Henry County, whether state or federal. Couple other things, just cleanup here, Mike, and that is, we discussed this engineering prior to the meeting.
Yes.
Because the numbers don't add up, and usually, I'm looking at numbers, but there is a $5,000 difference between the total of the match and the construction, and you indicated that's engineering. That was $5,000 over and above that talks to the total project. But also, you and I talked, and I indicate, you indicated, whether we do a consultant or in-house engineering, that $5,000 will be used to reduce our 108,000 dollar match.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Our match is $108,900.
Okay. And to the point of match, if you would, the criticism has been that these people might be people that we don't need if they're standing around doing nothing, that they can go out and spend their time doing sidewalks, if you would. I understand, and maybe you'll clarify this, please, yourself, or maybe the county manager, that we don't have excess of staff, but there are days or times that these people might have some hours to work on these projects, which I'll call it billable hours back on this project, will be credited to us. So it's not like we're using $100,000 of salaries of one or two or three people, whatever their salaries may be, for the next year, sitting out there, or we could have laid them off, which we've received a lot of criticism for laying people off, so here's a situation where we are keeping them productive to make this match, to get $435,000 to, as you indicated, these trails are already as part of the master plans, we're not creating something just to get 435 or spend match. So at the end of the day, we're effectively using county resources as well as obtaining these funds to assist in a project that was master planned before I got here.
Right.
And then doing what the public would like. The other thing is, what else can I mention? Other criticism I've heard, let me go to Mr. Holmes' point, Mr. Holmes, and that is, you said there is no PATH Foundation funds matching on this? There are no PATH funds on this one?
That's correct. There are no PATH.
Is that because we, it doesn't qualify, we didn't apply, or they didn't ask us to join in, or?
Didn't ask, you know, and the one that Commissioner Holmes referenced, the Panola Mountain Trail, it actually, it will serve as a leg to connect to a series of other PATH, PATH projects that have been done out throughout the Cav County, Rockdale County. Had a conversation with the commissioner in Rockdale County, and they're also working on paths in their area that will eventually connect to our PATH, which eventually will, again, this one-mile leg will eventually tie us to roughly 45, 50 miles of additional trail projects. So rather than having to physically pick up and drive to another county to get on a trail system, we'd be able to actually enter in the trail system, have a trailhead in Henry County that'll give us access to well over 40 miles of trails.
The issue was brought up about wheelchair and the parking lots and so on. The way I believe this reads, it's to enrich the traveling experience of motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians through enhancing our transportation system, I believe that's the language. To that extent, I would think we could, or at least could be researched, as to whether there could be a pathway from the parking lot in a handicapped area to the trails, as was already discussed. But it would appear, based on this definition, which I don't think the present master plan has, but if we're engineering this thing to, to do that, I would imagine we might have to lose some linear feet at the other end if it wasn't enough. And I believe also, I read someplace, there was a concern that we're responsible for any overages. So the question I have is, will there be strict control to make sure we do not exceed the amount of funds so we don't end up with greater than the $549,000 that is allocated to this project?
And there will be. We'll, again, we'll go through the bidding process ourselves, and, you know, we feel that, we've done that in the past, you know, bids come in over, over our budget of the amount, and to go back in and rebid them again, we can do that. We also have the options of perhaps picking up more of the, of the work in-kind to help offset the cost of the, of the potential bid, so we'll make sure that there are cost control measures in place.
The other concern I heard, and bring these out just for the constituents who did right, and that is that there was concern that we're, our police officers may not be getting pay increases, of course, all the others of laying people off and so on and so forth. This grant in itself is strictly for its specified purpose.
That's correct.
We can't use this money to do something with the police force. The in-kind funds that we're talking about, again, as I mentioned earlier, are using people in various other departments to do this work, and therefore, it has no effect on creating additional monies to be given to the police force. And I had one, for clarification, it's sort of not related, but it was given to me, so I'll just bring it up, and that is, I didn't get to it, was that our police officers are buying their uniforms, as somebody said, so they're misinformed or not aware that we are, but if I get clarification from the county manager, just for that constituent, that that is not the case, or if it is?
That is not the case. We have a uniform allotment, a uniform budget line item, we have a quartermaster who keeps up with those needs, and now, if there are extra items that a police officer wants to use his personal funds to, to purchase, that may be the case, but no, we have a uniform allotment and a quartermaster who does a good job keeping up with our needs. And, Mr. Alata, I think it's important, the earlier note that you made about our engineers and their, their scheduling, thinking back to last year's budget, budget discussion, within that budget, we did eliminate a utility coordinator position in, in Public Works, which I believe saved somewhere in the neighborhood of $75,000 or $80,000. And what we did, we took those duties and put them on the engineering department. We do not have engineers just sitting there waiting for work. They have, they have been given extra duties, such as those, as well as these, they are helping to engineer our new firing range out at the Public Safety Training Center. We are trying to be, become as efficient as we can with the, with the resources that we have.
And to that extent, just to clarify, since you said that, again, the personnel who will be doing this, or engineering it, or all the other things associated with this in-kind, are not so tight in their hours, that we're gonna be paying overtime to do this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, there is a resolution to accept the award of federal transportation enhancement funding for the purpose of constructing trails at Nash Farm, and since this is in District Two, Mr. Alata, I'll look to you for a motion.
Please approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a... The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to transmit the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element Annual Update. Sherri Hopson Matthews is our presenter, exhibit number nine.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. The request before you this morning is a resolution to transmit back to ARC in the Department of Community Affairs the county's desire to adopt our Short Term Work Program. If you all will recall, in June of this year, we submitted the Short Term Work Program to you all for review. There were some comments that were made, and staff has adjusted that information before we submitted it to ARC in DCA. So, the resolution this morning is just to adopt it, and we just have to have it adopted by October 31st so that we can stay in compliance with our qualified local government status. Should you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Sherri, I just have one quick question on page nineteen, item forty-two, just to see where we're at. It says, "Prepare an Interstate Activities Center zoning district to regulate the character of development near the I-75 corridor." And I know this is something that y'all are probably going to be working on in-house. Where are we at on that? Because we do have a couple of interchanges that some things are going to be taking place on, and if we can somewhat try to protect the aesthetics of those interchanges, it would probably help the county look a whole lot better as people are traveling through.
That is certainly something that we're looking at internally. We haven't begun the work on it right now. Our focus is on getting the Hudson Bridge Jonesboro Road corridor completed and getting that overlay adopted, and then hoping that we can take some of the information from that ordinance and see how we can apply it to the other areas. But that is certainly something that we have included in our report with no funding identified at this point, but that is something that we will work on.
Okay, great, thank you. Did any board member have a question or a comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Alata?
Clarification, I thought when I saw this in the book that we had done this already, and it said annual, so I was confused. So, I pulled my folder, if you would, on it. So, what we did in June was not submit, or we did submit, and this is a correction, or we were preparing, just for clarification purposes, when I saw it, saw it in here and saw annual, I thought, "How many annuals do you do in three months?" So...
Absolutely. What typically happens is staff will bring it to you all in June to actually transmit the report to ARC in the Department of Community Affairs. And then what they do at that time is they actually take all of the items and activities that we've listed and compare them to make sure that we didn't double list anything, and to make sure that the projects that we have listed are projects that we can complete within a five-year period. And then after we submit it to them for review, they keep it a couple of months, and then they send it back to us saying, "You meet the minimum standards." And there's certainly minimum standards that we have to meet. Because we collect impact fees, we also have to do a capital improvement element, and that is ninety percent of their focus, to make sure that our numbers line up with what we're reporting. After they review it, they'll send it back to us, and then today it's just your action to say, "This is our plan, and this is our goals and objectives that we look to accomplish within the 2011 through 2015 timeframe."
So, basically, what you're saying, I believe, is with the staff having done it early enough to get the proper review, as well as having ARC's review, it allows you and the county to be submitting a very accurate report by having enough eyes to look at it before the due date?
Absolutely, and we certainly, the Planning and Zoning Department is more of a funnel, funnel the information to Department of Community Affairs. We work very closely with our Finance Department, Fire Department, Spots Department, DOT, Transit Department. All of those departments provide us with the information. What we try to do is make sure that the information that we submit each year is consistent, and that we're not listing or double duplicating projects or listing things as completed that haven't been completed. So, we certainly make sure that the information is accurate. The challenge with this is our deadline to submit it is October 31st. But the Department of Community Affairs requires that you have the first review a hundred and twenty days prior to the October 31st. So, that's why it came to you all so early in June.
To those who don't have what we have, there's twenty-seven pages here of many, many lines of items. So, I just, again, the preparation of this to make sure it's complete, accurate, and the eyes on it. Hats off to yous for doing the job.
Thank you. We'll certainly make sure that this information is uploaded to the county website. So, if individuals have questions about what our work program is, they most certainly can take a look at it.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. Sherri, if the resolution is approved and adopted today, it will be filed to DCA before October 31st?
Absolutely. It is certainly, the clerk does a really good job of getting those sent to me. So, we will certainly, if I have to drive it up there myself. What we typically will do, because we have to do the Short Term Work Program for the City of Hampton and Stockbridge as well, I'll be presenting the City of Hampton tonight, and then the City of Stockbridge on Monday. And it is my desire, after the October 10th meeting before the Stockbridge City Council, to make sure that it's delivered on time.
You understand the reason for my question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Holder is going back in time to a period when that was inadvertently not done.
Oh, no.
We almost lost our status, and we did.
Well, I certainly will make sure that that...
But you remember, you remember the win, and it hadn't been that long.
It has been years ago. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to adopt the annual update of the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sherri. The next item is a public hearing. Twenty-five Seventeen Atlanta LLC of McDonough, Georgia requests a rezoning from M1 light manufacturing to M2 heavy manufacturing for property located at twenty-five Seventeen Highway Forty-two North and Land Lots One and Thirty-One of the Seventh District. The request is for the purpose of expanding the current electrical component refurbishing operation into a metals processing facility. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, Planning and Zoning Department, exhibit number ten. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. The request before you today is a request for rezoning for fifteen-acre piece of property located on the west side of Highway Forty-two, just south of the intersection with Brandon Road, and at the intersection of the now abandoned Tunis Road. And this property does back up to the Norfolk Southern Rail Line. The property is currently being used for the electrical component refurbishing, and the zoning is M1, and that's the appropriate zoning. The applicant wishes to expand their operation. The nature of their expansion would require an M2. The future land use map calls for industrial uses in this area. The zoning advisory board recommended approval with four conditions.
Does any board member have a question for Stacy? If not, I'd like to call for the applicant or the applicant's representative. And if you could, please state your name for the record.
My name is Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, 324 Industrial Boulevard in McDonough, Georgia. And good morning. I am here today representing Twenty-five Seventeen Atlanta LLC, who is the current owner and occupier of this fifteen-acre tract of land. As Stacy mentioned, we are currently zoned M1, and the request this morning is to rezon to M2. In the existing facility, they do process the electric components that Stacy had mentioned through various forms and fashions. And their request is to expand this facility to add another facet of the business, which includes processing of metal products. And that, those improvements, I'll outline a little more detail here in just a minute. But about Fortune Riverside, who is the business enterprise that works in this facility, they are an international company. They have handled company-wide over three hundred and fifty million pounds of material annually, ninety-nine percent of which is actually refined, recycled, and re-entered into the, into, back into the marketplace with one percent of those products actually ending up in a landfill. They have seventeen facilities coast to coast, with six facilities in Mexico and nine facilities in China and Hong Kong. So, these guys, they've been in business, the owner of the company's been doing this for over thirty years. And they basically cater to large Fortune Five Hundred-type companies, Black and Decker, Phillips, Georgia Power, et cetera. And they serve as a facility where they receive their products and then basically break them down, repackage them, and then ship them back. And again, this plan allows them to expand in an economy that is unfortunately currently shrinking. Their plan is to expand this facility to allow this other facet of their business, which is metal processing. This facility would, or this expansion would allow them to add another thirty-five, estimated thirty-five jobs with a million and a half dollar annual payroll. And the expansion, for the most part, is located, what is shown on this map, as west of the existing fence, which is here. There's a new building proposed in this location right here. It's a ten thousand square foot building. And there's an existing shed right here that would be relocated to here. And then these gravel parking areas here and here would be paved with concrete. They're also, as a product of this work, they would require an expansion of this existing stormwater pond back here in the back. And they are going to, there's an existing scale right here where the trucks get weighed. They will add a small scale house in this location, and then a small employee parking lot for those thirty-five new employees in this location. And then a turnaround area here for the tractor-trailers that get measured and weighed, where they can have the ability of turning around. Again, they've been conducting business in this facility for about two years, or a little over two years, inside of the existing building. And that product of the business is mostly the electronic components that they receive and that they package up. The metal processing would be handled in this out, in this, in this new facility and in the surrounding area around that. If you approve this zoning tonight, the amount of work that they intend to do is limited to what I just went through on this map. Those facilities there obviously would have to go through all of the engineering processes, and it would be a phased approach of construction. Not all of those facilities we built in the very first phase, but as far as the total development of this project, that's, that covers what their intent is. We've met with Georgia DOT. They have no concerns over the adequacy of Highway Forty-two. We're estimating between fifteen and twenty new tractor-trailer loads that this facility would generate. That's in addition to the additional vehicular trips that additional employees would generate. But again, they've confirmed that the driveway we have is adequate to handle that. We have utilities available to the site, both water and sewer. We have some adjacent uses that are compatible to the north. We have Eagle Storage warehouses. To the west, we have the railroad right-of-way. That right-of-way is a hundred and fifty feet with the track, the right-of-way is a hundred and fifty feet, and the tracks currently sit twelve foot higher than our property, which provides a great buffer. In addition, there's an existing berm on the south side of the project, adjacent to what used to be Tunis Drive, that would also remain. My client's done noise studies in anticipation of the potential concern of this facility. The noise studies that came back all said that there was nothing that this facility does to generate an excess amount of noise, and the greatest contributing factor to noise in this area is the railroad, which has some forty trains, I think, a day that uses that rail line. Their hours of operation are seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with seven to one on Saturdays, and the facility is closed on Sundays. The zoning advisory board unanimously approved the request. We had very little opposition. The one gentleman that did speak in opposition to the project lived in Eagles Landing Country Club, adjacent, across the railroad tracks from this site. His concern was mostly related to the blowing of horns and the, I guess, the use of the engine brakes as the trucks maneuver through the facility. As a result of that meeting, the applicant has met with him and has since published a memorandum that was distributed, or has been or will be distributed to the drivers that basically restricts the use of their horns and establishes a very strict protocol and repercussions for people who do blow the horns, trying to be good neighbors and, you know, recognize that there are residential communities, although they're two hundred, some odd more than two hundred feet away in the general vicinity. And that's, I think that about covers the request. We did read the recommendations, the conditions of approval from the ZAB meeting. Had one question or clarification point to number four, which was the comment, the condition regarding the use of the airhorns in the minutes of the meeting, the condition was limited to from six PM to seven AM. That was the condition as was handed, or recommended by the ZAB. As it got typed into the final zoning resolution, it did not have a timeframe. So, we were just going to ask for some clarification on that one issue. But other than that, we have no concerns, and I'm the applicant's here, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Bowman?
Steve, you answered a couple of questions that I've had. As far as, because I read the condition, number four, the applicant shall reduce noise from sound of trucks, airhorns, and engine brakes, and I put a big question mark and said, "How?"
How do you use engine brakes?
Exactly how you're going to do that. So, now, you mentioned they were open from seven AM till the hours of operation, till what time?
Till six, till six PM.
Six PM.
Or five PM, I'm sorry.
Okay, five PM, all right. Now, are you saying that trucks are coming in constantly, on a constant basis? Is that...
There may be trucks that come in outside of those timeframes. But as far as their office staff and the normal receiving staff, those are their hours. But there may be deliveries that are made after those hours. But under no circumstances, you know, would the horns be used to, apparently they use the horns to, if there's, if the administrative staff has left and the people that man the gates that allow these trucks to enter the facility, they'll lay on the horn to notify the people that they need to come out and let them in. And that's, that part of their process they've changed.
There's a number of notes here, and I need to ask the county attorney just a quick question. All right. There are some contracts that they have currently, and it's a matter of public record with AT&amp;T. However, in my opinion, this has nothing, I mean, if I recuse from everybody that's got a contract with AT&amp;T, then everybody's got a cellphone, I can't do anything with it. So, but I, because it's in, it is a matter of public record, I need to state that I do have contracts with AT&amp;T, but I have no interest at all in this project.
That's right.
And I feel like, because this is in my back door, and this is actually part of my neighborhood, that I should have input on it, so I'm just asking the question.
And in that regard, that would be a remote or incidental interest that would not rise to the level of the conflict?
Right.
Commissioner Bowman, I appreciate the inquiry from you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make that clear, because it's part of public record, and we need to make sure that we keep everything above board. But anyway, all right, so they do, they, from the hours from six PM at night to seven AM, they're not going to be allowed to blow their horns, basically, right?
That's correct.
And you're right, there are forty, it seems like at times there's more than forty trains going back and forth through there, because literally, I mean, I hear them at my house, and I'm a pretty good way zone in Eagles Landing. I'm not that close to the tracks, so. There was a couple of other things. I think one is that when you do all of this paving in these phases, you know, I think you and I made some, we had a conversation about it, but the retention, you may have to do some retention pond work on that southern end. I'd call it the southeast.
Yes, sir.
End.
Yes, sir.
That would need to have some work done on it, if you'd point that out, because it actually comes to the, right, right in there, where we come down into that section where it's at, the abandoned Tunis Road.
That's correct.
And we have to keep that road up, because there's a switch up there that has to be maintained.
That is correct. There's a switch station that is right at the end of this road. And the road, I guess, has been abandoned. However, the access has to be maintained for that purpose. But, yeah, the pond, basically, once we move to what we've called on this map Phase Three, which essentially is the scale house and the parking lot, the basin, there's a basin divide that runs right, kind of right through here, and basically, all of this will drain this way, and as such, would need a new detention pond built in that corner.
Okay. Now, your twenty-five to thirty-five employees, that would be new employees, are they just in Phase One? Or do they come along after the fact in the office warehouse center?
Yeah, they would come along in the very first phase. I mean, the first phase, the initial phase... I mean, the first phase, the initial phase of this is to allow the ability for them to process the metals, and once they have that system in place, then they can immediately hire that group of people to perform that service.
Now, currently, there's two recycling centers on Highway forty-two.
Yes, sir.
One of them is, lacks an awful lot to be desired.
Yes, sir.
Not going to mention any names in that, but that is, that's kind of the mom-and-pop organization that bring in a washing machine in the back of their car and sell the recycled metal, which I have no problem with that, because it's reused and don't end up in the landfill.
Yes, sir.
But on the same token, this is a more high-tech facility that deals more in the electronics industry and also in the rebar industry. I understand that, because on a number of occasions, I've torn buildings down around Atlanta before and been able to take my rebar, virtue a, with, you know, with one of my dump trucks or whatever to a center that would take it and redo it. So that's more of what this is. This is, we're, we're not going to ride by here and see a lot of plastic bags holding aluminum cans and...
No, sir, no, sir.
Washing machines and refrigerators, right?
That is correct, and the facility won't be advertised to the general public. I think ninety percent of people that drive by there will never know what it is. The facility, their business is not made by the guys bringing the garbage bag full of crushed aluminum cans and an old washing machine. Their normal clientele, like I said earlier, is large corporate industry who has excess material, whether it's electronics or metal that they need processed. Now, there may be from time to time some individual person out there that's in the construction industry or that has something that they would be interested in, but it would be under a coordinated fashion, you know, where they call ahead and there's arrangements made.
Yeah, not just, "By the way, I'm bringing my truck in."
Exactly.
You know, I've got all sorts of...
No junk cars, none of that type of stuff, nothing that has anything to do with chemicals.
I only have one more, and this was, this was during the meeting, and it was Mr. Henderson, Clay Henderson, who lives in Eagles Landing, and you did mention, you did mention that, mention his name, and I think you've done, from what I can tell, you've done everything to address his concerns on that, so.
Yes, sir. My understanding is that he is more than pleased with the outcome of just a couple of changes that they were able to make after they talked at the, after the ZAB meeting.
All right. One other thing, the construction materials, and I say, we will handle that, you know, when they bring something to us, will match the existing construction materials that are existing on this complex.
As far as the scale house, is that, I'm sorry, I mean...
Right. The scale house and any other facilities that are built, that they will be conforming and matching of what we have.
Yes, sir. Our Unified Land Development Code will require materials, and the materials will be required to be matching.
All right. May I just, I'll have...
Any other board member have a question or comment?
I have one.
Mr. Holder?
Stacy, does this subject property lie with any, within any watershed protection area that would prohibit this type of use?
No.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, at this time, since this is a public hearing, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Did you have, did you want to speak in opposition, sir? No, okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? And if there's no further questions from the board, Mr. Bowman, I will look to you for a motion.
Motion to approve.
And what would you, would you like to add from six p.m. to seven a.m. on item, on condition number four?
Yes, ma'am, I would. I, I thank you for that, because I made a note that I wanted to, actually have it right there, where I wanted to add that to item number four, so that we're very clear on what we're doing there.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with that change. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Redo, quit blowing their horns when they go.
Yeah, get a load of that.
Moving on to County Manager, we have a resolution requesting approval of the declaration of official intent to finance cost of airport properties. Our presenter is Butch Sanders, County Manager, exhibit number eleven.
Morning, Madam Chair and Board. On August the nineteenth of this year, we closed the purchase of Terra Field with Clayton County. Under U.S. Treasury regulations, we have sixty days to pass a resolution which only reserves the right to finance the purchase cost, along with miscellaneous associated costs of the purchase. And basically, what this resolution before you does is reserve that right, does not take any action towards such financing, and you can either use bonds or other methods. And basically, we have a lot of conversations going on that would cover our investment out at Terra Field, but this is another option, which I am suggesting be adopted through this resolution, should it become necessary in the future.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Aletta?
Well, this was brought up earlier, a different meeting. I'll just bring it up again, because I understand that wasn't televised for the public, but again, the three million dollars is in excess of the two-point-seven, but that's anticipating the need for possible working funds or additional financing that might be needed, and rather inhabit available to us, such as for the runway, which we are understanding is two-and-a-half percent would be our contribution of what was estimated at the time, ten to, ten to fifteen million dollars or twelve million dollars, so that sort of makes up the difference of the two-point-seven.
That's correct. It gives us that leeway.
And you did mention, same thing, that this financing is not limited to or strictly bonds. This is any type of financing that the county can put forth to...
That's correct.
And basically, it'll replenish then the general funds that presently have been used to purchase the airport.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? If not, you have before you a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for a declaration of official intent, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Aletta, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of McDonough for an exchange of services, and this is handout number two. If you remember, this item was tabled at the September twentieth meeting.
Many, many months ago, the county received a grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for landscaping and right-of-way improvements along Jonesboro Road from the Norfolk Southern Railroad to the I-75 interchange. And there were many, many hoops that had to be jumped through before that money could be drawn down, and the last of which is addressed by this proposed intergovernmental agreement. It is a mandatory on DOT parts, DOT's part, a mandatory agreement for guaranteeing the maintenance of said right-of-way improvements. And when we sat down with the, with the city to talk about how this could best be accomplished, we realized that we do some things very well, and they do some things very well. And that suggested that we talk about an exchange of services. We do paving very well, they do finer or closer landscaping much better than we do. We don't major in that in our Public Works Department. So we, we looked at budgets, what it was going to take to maintain this right-of-way on an annual basis, and the dollar amount came up to the sixty-thousand-dollar figure. And so we worked this, worked through this agreement where we would provide on our part sixty-thousand dollars' worth of paving services, labor, and equipment per year to the city, and they would take care of the sixty-thousand dollars' worth of maintenance responsibility along Jonesboro Road. And that is basically what is in front of you here. We worked out a formula to determine exactly how we would come up with the labor and equipment costs. I think Mr. McMichael probably could speak to that very well, and Terry, I'm going to ask you to do that at this point in time.
What we came up with... Come up with an idea of what we, what would be fair on the dollar value of the labor and equipment. We would take an annual Georgia DOT LARP contract or resurfacing contract that Georgia DOT bids out. That would give us the total cost of what contractors are currently charging for asphalt. From that, we would take our annual contract of what we buy asphalt for. So if you take what the contractor's getting, take out of that what the cost of asphalt is, that would leave you basically your labor or equipment, and of course, any profit and overhead that was in it. So based on that formula, we would use the Georgia DOT contract for this area for resurfacing. We'd take out what we're currently paying for asphalt. That would give us a unit price per ton for our labor and equipment, and we would put down enough tons to come up to that value of as close as we can to the sixty-thousand dollars. We anticipate that would be somewhere around a mile and a half of resurfacing.
Does any board member have a question for Terry about that? Okay. Any questions for County Manager?
Well, Madam Chair, I have a comment. I think this particular grant, Mr. Holder might have been involved in this, or remember this, back in oh-four, oh-five, when we first started the process of doing Jonesboro Road. This grant was, was made available then, was in the process of being made available, but this thing's been in the works now for almost six years to finish the project out there, and I'm finally glad to see this thing come to the, come to a finish line, so.
And I also believe that the city of McDonough approved this agreement earlier this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a question. Nobody from the city mentioned House Bill four-eighty-nine or anything in this arrangement.
No, sir.
Thank you. And they have already approved this agreement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. If not, you have before you a resolution from the Board of Commissioners to establish an intergovernmental agreement between the city of McDonough and Henry County for an exchange of services regarding Jonesboro Road landscaping. And Mr. Stamey, this lies in your district, so I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve it.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes from August the fifteenth. These are regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Aletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Yes, you were. Motion carries five zero. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Mr. County Manager, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events, Monday, October the seventeenth at nine a.m. and Tuesday, October eighteenth at six-thirty p.m., these are both regular board meetings. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters.
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.